Test, test. Few minutes. All right. Uh, this is President Top. I am now calling the, uh, board special meeting to order at four thirty-one P M. Uh, please note that this meeting is being recorded. Um. Hang on just a second. Sorry, everyone. Um, I'd like to acknowledge that, uh, we, we are on ancestral lands and the traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. For the record, I will call the role. Vice President Briggs. Director Clark.
President.
Director Hershey.
Here.
Director Mizrahi.
Here.
Uh, Director Rankin is out of town and will not be joining this meeting. Director Sargu. Don't see Director Sargu. Um, and this is President Top. Okay, before we get started, um, I want to quickly note that there are three board engagement sessions coming up. Um, April twenty-fourth at Aki Karoso Middle School, April thirtieth at Denny, uh, International Middle School, and May seventh at Daniel Bagley Elementary. Uh, please see our website for more information. Um, this special meeting tonight, though, is to conduct interviews of three executive search firms. Uh, these three firms were selected at our April ninth special meeting based on their proposals to conduct, uh, something that is very, um, important to us. Our superintendent's search, uh, tonight's meeting should last roughly three hours. So I want to thank directors, staff, and the search firms for being here on a Friday night. Um, each firm will have forty minutes for their interview. Uh, the firms were provided with the questions in advance that directors had and have prepared presentations in response to our questions. Uh, directors will have the opportunity to ask follow-up questions of the firms following their presentation. There's roughly a ten-minute break between each interview to allow for sort of the shuffle between the firms. Um, and, uh, and we will just kind of systematically go through it. We will hear from Ray and Associates, followed by McPherson and Jacobson, and we will close with H Y A. I will provide a time check roughly when there's ten minutes left in each interview. Uh, directors should have in their inboxes scoring sheets for each interview. Um, procurement staff are here online as well. If directors have any questions, um, allow, uh, want questions, um, please raise your hand, um, before we start the presentations, but also we can take some questions after. Um, your Brandon has a quick question. Brandon?
Oh, he just wanted to see, uh, what is going to be the utilization for the scoring sheets after? Do we need to make sure that we send those in? Are they just for our personal use?
Perfect question. So we're going to submit scores to the board office by April twenty-second for tabulation. So fill it, fill it out, send it into, uh, the board office. At our April twenty-third meeting, we will review who the, the tabulation, the scores, and select a firm, uh, for board action during our regular board meeting on the twenty-third. Does that make sense?
Just, yeah, absolutely. I would just say if it's possible to, you know, flash the, um, like, the scoring curriculum just for the public so they can see what we're, um, uh, judging this on. That might be helpful, but other than that, I'm ready to go. Thank you.
I agree. I'm wondering if we can get that, looking to board staff here, seeing if we can get that on, on the screen. We will, we will work.
We'll work on pulling that up.
Thank you so much. Um, any other questions? Okay, so we will work on getting the, oh, Director Clark.
Um, yeah, I might be a little ahead, but, um, are we gonna go around Rob, like, in any particular order for asking questions or?
Uh, we will just raise our hands, um, post-interview. So interview, what, once the presentation is done by each firm, um, our follow-up questions, directors should just use the raise the hand function, and we will just go in order of, uh, those who can. Um, there is a little bit of wiggle room in our, in our schedule if we go over, um, but gonna try to keep us on time tonight.
All right. Thanks, President Top.
Thank you, Director Clark. Others? All right. Um, so again, I will provide a time check when there's ten minutes left in the, in the interview, um, but I will now hand it over to Ray and Associates for our first, uh, interview.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, yes.
Oh, good, okay. Well, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Good evening, President Top, members of the board. Our team is very pleased to be able to present to you our plan for finding the next superintendent for Seattle Public Schools. We understand how important superintendent leadership is, and we are very passionate about assisting school boards to find that, to fill that crucial leadership role. Uh, you sent us about fifteen questions, and we will attempt to answer all, all of them in the next forty minutes. So we have our work cut out for us. And I would like to share my screen, but it looks like somebody else is sharing right now. Uh, can I share my screen? I press the share button here, see what happens.
And we will, during our ten-minute breaks and transitions, we will go back to that rubric for the public.
Very good. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, that's good. Technology's working, and that's a relief. So I'm gonna keep rolling along here. Uh. My name is Steve Chestnut. I was an educator in Washington State for thirty-five years, including twenty-one years as a superintendent. Next, I was a superintendent in Arizona for six years, and my last two years of full-time work was an executive director and associate superintendent in the Scottsdale Unified School District, and we continue to live in Scottsdale. Uh, for the past five years, I've been working part-time for Ray Associates. It's work that I greatly enjoy, and, uh, just pleased to be here tonight, and I'll let, uh, Dr. Richard McBride introduce himself. I'm sure Rich is muted or what?
Appears that Richard is unmuted, but maybe frozen.
Well, then, in that case, I will just keep rolling along. If Rich can join us, that would be great. Uh, Dr. Richard McBride, uh, has extensive experience in Washington State. Uh, he's been a superintendent in the state of Washington for over thirty years and was, uh, superintendent of the North Central Educational Service District, I believe, for, uh, fifteen years. Uh, he's currently an assistant professor at Washington State University, uh, in the Superintendent Preparation Program, and it's a pleasure to have Dr. Richard McBride with us. I know he's there, and hopefully we'll get to hear from him soon. Uh, my next colleague is, uh, Ms. Libra Ford, and Libra is traveling. She, uh, told me that she would be in the hotel lobby, uh, where she's checking in on time, and I think she hopefully will join us any moment. Uh, but in the meantime, I will continue. So Libra Ford has been an educational advocate for over twenty-five years, which included the founding of a charter school in Hawaii. She's the former board president of the North Plaquemine School Board and currently serves on the Oregon State Board of Education. She is currently the executive director of the Women's Foundation of Oregon, and she lives in Damascus, Florida. Next member of our team is unable to be here tonight, Mr. Richard Lasso. Uh, he is the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Instructional Leadership for the Puyallup School District. He's also a native Spanish speaker, and he lives in Puyallup. And the final member of our team, Dr. David Falties, is also not able to be with us this evening. He is our managing director. He served as a superintendent in Texas for eighteen years and retired from the Carroll Independent School District in South Lake, Texas in twenty-twenty. So that is our team. We'd like to start with, uh, your highlights, and, uh, we are very aware of, uh, your mission, your vision, and your belief that your students come first. We very much enjoyed, uh, I very much enjoyed reacquainting myself with Seattle School District, uh, having been a longtime Washington State educator and, uh, getting up to speed on your current initiatives and, uh, the different issues you are facing this year. Not an easy, uh, list of things that you're facing, but no school district, uh, has an easy task ahead of them. So, uh, we're very impressed with your district and very much looking forward to working with you.
Steve, is that microphone back?
Yes, it is. Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, I apologize. Sure, why, why looked, okay, and looked okay on the screen there, but Steve, if you want to move to the next slide real quick? Thank, uh, the top, the, the board, the pleasure being with you tonight, and apologize for the, for the technical, technical issues there. You know, I think it is fair on this slide to just share with you when you look at, uh, so, see, share a little bit of, and I'll, I'll run through these, these five boxes on the top of the screen. I'll do them counter, and as you can see, you'd be hiring a firm that actually has been at this work of executive. Eighteen seventy-five. Uh, our associate team and our consultants, we value diversity, and in fact, our, our leadership team and our consultant team, uh, is, leadership team is comprised of women and, and people of color. As you can see, we, uh, pride ourselves on recruiting from just some of the largest national pools of candidates, uh, yeah, a perfect fit for the Seattle School District, who of course have a highly trained, full-time staff behind us, helping to do a lot of the important support work as we go forward. The last box, I think, is truly probably the most important. At the end of the day, uh, this is your search. We call alongside, we, at least we try to bring important tools and processes to help you, but it's really important for a search firm just simply be reminded that this is your search. And our job really at the end of the day is to not bring you necessarily the most number of candidates. Sometimes it's easy to get focused on that. Steve and I are working on it with, uh, with another currently, and the first, one of the early questions was how many candidates can you bring? And our response back was probably the real question that we want to ask is, we want to bring you the best at the end of the day. And so when we think about the executive search process, this is about bringing to Seattle School District not just the superintendent that you hire, but more importantly, to bring you the superintendent that you deserve. The Seattle, the students of Seattle School District, your staff, your community, we want to bring you the, uh, we possibly can. Steve, the next slide, please. And then lastly, when you look at bringing Ray and Associates alongside to assist you, it's clear we are, we are deeply committed to an inclusive process, to bringing you a diverse and highly candidate pool. Uh, work together with you, will ask questions. One of the things I think that you will appreciate the most is that we listen deeply. We listen deeply to your stakeholders, which includes staff and students and members of the community. And in the, you know, I would just say this, in short, I think a huge difference for us is that at the end of the day, we don't do this for you, but with you. And I think that as a search firm, we want to make sure that not be reminded, this is your search, and we're here to assist and to help you. Steve?
We want to start with our suggested timeline, and, uh, Libra Ford has sent me a text message. She is logged on. She says that her microphone is muted, and I'm not sure if, uh, that's something you can fix on your end or not. Libra, are you on? Can you hear me? She, she's getting a message that her microphone is disabled, and I don't know exactly what that means. I'm not an expert on Microsoft Teams.
We are moving her from a.
I'm good now. Thank you for moving me over from the, um, visual. Thank you.
Okay, Libra, it's yours.
Excellent. Hello, everyone. I apologize for my tardiness. I actually drove to California today, so came just on time. Excited to be here with you guys. My name is Libra Ford, and I know that I was introduced earlier. But as you also may or may not know, I've been in your seat, in your shoes. I was a school board member who had to select a firm, and we selected Ray and Associates, and we got a wonderful superintendent out of it. And not only am I in your shoes as a former board member, I currently sit on the state board, but I'm also in your shoes, Joe, because I'm a Brandeis graduate. So hello to my alma mater. Um, suggested timeline for this is based on five stages, and for us, we want to start somewhere in May and make sure you have someone in mid-July, which would give some time for them to settle in. If they're moving, move, and also get acclimated into the system. And some key things is, of course, makes, making sure we plan with the board and discuss the in, with individual boards, the interviews, that's the first step of each stage. We don't do anything without consulting with you. Uh, midway through, of course, we're building that profile with you to make sure that you're clear on what we're looking for, and the public is clear on what we look for, and everybody has input in that. And then our top candidates, we hope to choose, um, in June, and then, of course, the final meeting and selecting the last person, uh, in that last interview process for mid-July. Next slide. So in stage one, the main thing that we focus on is board input. And I know that one of your questions really focuses on how do you get input? How do you figure out, um, what people in your community want? Um, it begins with us first talking with each board member, and part of that is our thirty-one quality assessment, where we go through an online and an in-person process. In our interviews with you as a board member individually, we're gonna be asking, who are the stakeholders that you want us to talk to? And then we're gonna meet with them individually and make sure that we listen to them, and we will transcribe what they say into a anonymous and neutral wording, because we don't want to elevate any particular soundbite, but we want you to hear voices and what they're looking for. And so it starts off with the board input. And in that board input into one-on-ones, we also will ask you things like, do you have anyone that you want to recommend? And if you do suggest someone, we'll keep those names, and later on in the process, I'll share how we use that. The focus here is to really get down and dirty with you, understand where your heart is at, and combine all of those heartset comments into a mindset, piece-of-paper transactional list that will go into stage two. Next slide. This, the second slide, which basically is our community engagement and profile development. So here's where we take the stakeholder list that you suggested, and we meet with those stakeholders as the community engagement, and that can include your, uh, um, your staff, your teachers, families, uh, community, um, municipalities, um, everybody that you feel will be, um, good to hear from. We will listen to them in person. And then we also have an online survey, which they then can go through the thirty-one quality assessment and basically rank them, and we will develop that data for you and prepare for our stage three. Next slide. And in stage three, we begin recruitment while also collecting that data and being prepared to share you what we see. So recruitment includes where we're posting it, which we will go into detail based on your questions in, in a second. Um, where we're posting it and all of the, uh, folks that have been suggested to us, whether, whether it's through the individual board meetings or the stakeholder meetings, we also ask them if they have anybody that they'd like to include. And we begin to aggressively recruit top, top candidates nationally to make sure that we get a good list in front of you. Stage three, uh, next, uh, slide for stage four. This is where we will develop the candidate pool. So once we go through that stakeholder list and the thirty-one, um, qualities, and we develop, um, a process with you where we will come up with ten to twelve qualities that we agree with, um, that you agree with through your board interviews and also the stakeholders' comments, we'll guide you through that, and that becomes a profile. And then from there, and as people will apply, they will see that, they'll see what you're looking for, see who you're looking for, and how they should, you know, have expertise, and then that candidate pool will be put in front of you, where we will, um, do a semi-background check before we get to that finalist list. When we get to the finalists, we do a deep background check and make sure that that is done on everyone, and that is of no charge. But in the candidate pool, what's really, really important, and, and one of your questions is about the tools that we use, we use a matrix to make sure that you're, you're judging people against each other in a way that's really objective. Um, and then we get to that finalist list from there. Next slide. Last but not least is the candidate selection. This is the fun part. As a board member, your key objective is picking the candidate. So, uh, once we go through the matrix and get to your top candidates, and we use a, a different tools in there, which again, as I, I want to go through your questions and make sure we answer them, but as we use our tools to identify the candidates and then help you with our matrix tools to then get to the finalists, we then will help you select that final three or four. It's really up to you. We try to aim for what is best for you. It's a consensus-building matrix, and then you get to pick them. The finalists will then come to your district and meet everyone. That similar stakeholder list that we start with, they will come in and meet them in person and kind of do the dog and pony show, and so everyone will have an input, um, opportunity there, too. Next slide. So additional things. I just want to go through quickly, um, your questions to make sure that we don't miss anything. So how do we ensure we're hearing from diverse groups? I talked about our thirty-one quality assessment. This is done in person and also online. We know that some people are more comfortable online, whether it's just the environment or time. Um, people have both options. Even the folks that come in person for community engagement meetings with us, we have a set, a set of questions that they will see. We are taking those notes, but we also remind them that they can still go home and take that online survey, because sometimes you're processing questions in front of us, and you don't always get all the answers out that you really want. Another thing that's important to us to make sure it's a diverse pool is listening to you as a board, as representatives of your constituents, like, who do you want us to talk to? We will find those people. We will reach out to them. Maybe they don't come to the advertised virtual or the advertised, um, in-person engagement. We'll call them directly and make sure their voice is in that data that we're collecting. Your next question was, how do you approach community and stakeholder forums and listening sessions? Going back to that, we, we approach them with standard questions. Uh, we are facilitators in those meetings, making sure that everyone is heard, making sure the environment feels comfortable and welcome, and we also make sure that we do not, uh, translate or transcribe anyone's, um, feedback verbatim. We want everyone to feel comfortable that what they're saying will not come back to them. Um, and so we make sure that that's a really important tool, and at the end of it, we make sure we describe to them the interview process and what we've been working with you on in terms of the timeline, so everyone walks away from those very clear on what's next. Uh, if you use a tool, how is it advertised? We use the district regular communication tools. We work with your district, whether it's your board secretary or communications department. We don't want to deviate from how people are using communication or used to get in communication, so we make sure that we use that, um, the same structure. We're also open to new ways if you're looking to do that. Um, our survey process has been excellent. Uh, recently, we just did North Shore's school surveys, so in person and online, we had over two thousand responses, and this included over eleven hundred, um, responses from families, um, in the community. We're super proud of that, and so our process works in terms of how we communicate, and it's really relation-focused. Um, how we process and analyze the reports, uh, in the second meeting with the board after we've done the one-on-ones, um, and, and some of the engagement group stuff, we, we basically take all that information, and we have that thirty-one assessment tool. People are able to rank them, including the board, including staff, and everyone gets to rank them, and we tell you the top ten and twelve. We give you the raw data of how people ranked all thirty-one, and then we also give you, um, data how we feel that information can dovetail into a really succinct ten-to-twelve list of what you're looking for in terms of the top characteristics of the best candidate. So candidate profile, uh, can you give us details about how the final profile developed, uh, after we interview you and we take the survey data raw and, uh, this is disaggregated? Um, we disaggregate it based on communities, and we make sure you see all of that, and we take that and we have a board meeting with you, and we have this pure discussion with you. It is up to you what characteristics you want to put in that profile, but we will always come with recommendations. You're never in this process by yourself. You're always in this process with us. We're here to make sure you feel comfortable and clear on what is next. Uh, so what is the process for board members, staff, and, uh, proposing candidates to, uh, get us board recruits, like we said earlier, like I said earlier? Every meeting we have with you or stakeholders, the question that we always ask is, is there someone in the community that you would like to recommend that we should recruit? But in addition to that, we have other methods to make sure that we're doing, so that's kind of like the internal, um, direct intentional approach of finding recruits. But then we also have an external, direct, intentional way of doing recruits, and I'm gonna pass it to Steve to talk about the message that we use, the methods that we use for finding diverse candidates with some of the, um, advertising boards that we use. Um, Steve, you want to talk about that?
Certainly. We work with you to select national advertisers, uh, American Association of School Administrators, for example, uh, Education Week and others, but we also encourage and recommend that you advertise with the National Alliance of Black School Educators, with the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. And, you know, the, the question was, what kind of results do we get from that? Uh, we get good results. Uh, we have, uh, as Rich mentioned, forty percent of our national consultants are women and are, are people of color, and they do an excellent job of reaching out to good candidates. Uh, and then, of course, as she mentioned, the five consultants on this team will also reach out, uh, to diverse candidates and encourage them to apply.
Yeah, and part of that, too, is we are really intentional about saying to you, this is what your pool looks like, and is that diverse? We're not gonna tell you who to pick. We're not gonna tell you how to pick them, but we will elevate things like, is this the diversity that you're looking to have, even from just the pool? Um, so we'll make sure we put them in front of you, but we'll also make sure as you're going through the process that you're aware of what you're picking and how you're picking it. Uh, next question is, what methods do we use to engage candidates who historically have been underrepresented? Um, in our last few searches, we definitely had, um, a lot of underrepresented, um, groups. Uh, for me personally, and I know with my team, they know we are intentional about making sure that those don't normally, um, are, that aren't normally seen in these leadership roles are elevated to these pools. And then it's up to you to decide if they are who will represent the school district well. We all know that, um, the more diversity you have, it, it, it influences everyone. It's not just one group. Diversity helps everyone. When one diverse, right, when one diverse group rises, we all rise, and so we want to make sure that we help you with that equity look, but it is still up to you what is best for you and what is best for this district beyond all of our existence in this role. Uh, Seattle Public Schools has experienced significant challenges. Seattle Public Schools has experienced significant challenges, including structural budget challenges. How do you plan to address these issues? So we're well aware of your hundred-plus million-dollar deficit that's coming. It is definitely a national issue. As a state board member in Oregon, we are constantly dealing with this also. It is terrifying and very unclear what is next. There's two things I want to say on how we will approach that. One, we want to make sure that in our questions, so when the candidate fills out the information, there's also a Spark Hire video that you will get. We want to make sure that in those questions that we're asking them, that they are being asked about how they will approach these things. The beautiful thing about the Spark Hire video is that it's a one-and-done, right? So they really, they're going to be asked the question and then they have to answer it. And you're going to see those responses and see if it's what you're looking for. Because we all know with these types of deficits, they're going to be in the front of media. They're going to be in front of parents. They're going to be in front of families, leaders in your municipalities that you serve. And they need to be able to be clear and effective on what these deficits will do and what is the plan. So our approach to this will be making sure you see it from the very beginning in that Spark video. How will they approach this? Because it is very important that they're walking into this role ready to tackle this issue and not afraid. Candidate placement, what would you, what would your approach and recommendation be? If you don't find a suitable one? I love this question because, of course, there's always fear that with all of our skills and all the years that Ray and Associates have been doing this, there is a possibility that you don't get a candidate pool that you're happy with, right? So there's kind of three steps that we would recommend to you. The first would be if we go through this process through July and we don't find someone that's satisfactory to you, which is not our goal. Our goal is to bring you enough people to make the decision hard. But if we get to that point and it isn't working out for you, we would then recommend an interim, that you should appoint an interim. And then we reset for the fall to make sure in the fall you have a nice candidate pool ready to apply. And then we would do the same assessment process, the five-stage process with you at no additional cost. So you are not going to be left alone. This process will definitely be, we will walk through it with you from the beginning to the end. And if it's not successful, we will make sure that we restart it with you and get to the end. What is the average rate of retention? So before the pandemic, retention for superintendents was over seven years, seven and a half years. After the pandemic, we're about three-point-five, three-point-six years that superintendents will remain in a position. Please know that our goal is to have enough questions for you to know what kind of stake this candidate has in your community. Are they interested in building roots in your community? We will make sure that we elevate those questions so you can hear that in the process and really see what people are thinking. In addition to that, remember that we have a two-year guarantee. So any superintendent that we place for two years, we will not poach them. So if they're in your school district and we place them, we're not going to come after them because there's a bigger or better job somewhere. Instead, we're going to support them staying where they are. Have you worked with a board torn between two highly qualified candidates? This is a great question because Steve just experienced that. So I'll pass it back to you, Steve.
Yes, and just to clarify Labor's last comment, we don't do any recruiting of superintendents that we place for five years. We also have a two-year guarantee that we will come back and do the search again for free if the superintendent leaves. Rich, I think we're going to talk more about that. So we have a couple guarantees that we like to make. But yes, I did have a situation in a recent search in Arizona where the board was really torn. We had two really great candidates and we had a difficult decision. And so what we did during the deliberation phase is that we just encouraged the board to go back to the ideal candidate profile based on the survey, based on the stakeholder feedback, and to reflect on what were the characteristics they were looking for in the new superintendent. There were twelve characteristics on that list and we had to talk about most of them to really get down to the bottom of which person was best qualified to meet the criteria that we had set. In the end, we selected the in-state candidate. Really was an in-state, out-of-state candidate discussion and I think the board made the right decision in that case.
Thank you, Steve. The next question you have is the search tools. Can you provide details on the specified tools? I spoke a little bit about the first one. I'll speak about three different tools and be very specific about each one. So in the first part of the candidate recruitment, when candidates are, when we get them down to like your top kind of ten, seven to ten candidates, they're going to have what we call the Spark Hire video. And this Spark Hire video is a one-way communication tool where they're going to have the one-and-done, like I talked about earlier, questions that will be prompted to them and they must answer them in addition to their paperwork and all those things. And we do soft kind of background checks at that time. But you get to watch those. And those tools are really important because they're about ten minutes of really seeing how people react to certain subjects, how they make comments about certain subjects. Because part of the major thing that a superintendent should be able to do is communicate well. And so this will give you that opportunity to not just see what's on paper, but see the human and how they react to questions that will require other humans to have experiences that are hopefully elevating them. And that's mostly the youth. The second tool that we're really proud of is our matrix, which is a consensus tool. And we use this to get down to like the top seven to ten candidates when we first present a big pool to you. And then we also use it to get down to the finalists. And this matrix is very interesting. It's based on you basically judging each candidate against another so that each candidate is then seen against another and in your mind, which ones stand out the most. So at the end, using numerical numbers, we easily can kind of pinpoint with those numbers where your board sits on which candidate. And then after that kind of list elevates into like rankings, then we have discussions about how those rankings are and are those numbers really speaking to what your heart and mind is feeling? And so we go through that process with you, make sure you're really clear. And it's a great way to have consensus without a lot of emotion beginning in the conversation. We go through it kind of transactionally and then we get to the kind of heart set of it. And the last thing, of course, is our third-party background checks, which we do at no additional cost. And that is when you get to the finalists, we want to make sure that we do a deep dive on who they are and what they have done or haven't done. And we will make sure that you get that information so that when you make a decision, you're clear on who you made a decision on and what they represent and what they bring to your school district. Next slide, Steve, or did I leave anything out that you'd like to add? I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's go back to that second one, search experience. The question was, share with us your most recent superintendent search you conducted for a district of similar size and with similar challenges as Seattle Public Schools. What went well? What surprised you and what did you learn from that experience? For me, that was the search that we did in the Anchorage School District, the search that was in 2022. Anchorage is a district of forty-four thousand students and a very complex place. Very proud district that's doing a lot of really great work. But that was a very interesting search. And the board was pleased with the candidate pool that included both in-state and out-of-state applicants. They were very interested in it being a national search. But there are also certainly some good qualified candidates in the state. In the end, an out-of-state applicant was hired and Dr. Jared Bryan is still on the job and doing really good work. But during that process, I learned the importance of having a weekly conversation with a board member who's designated as the contact person throughout the process. In the case of Anchorage, it was the board president. This is something that we always recommend and do on every search. And that is to make sure that we have good communication between our team and one member of the board that's designated to make sure that when minor issues come up, things that need to be discussed are resolved and taken care of. And I found that communication loop worked really very well. David Faltes, also a member of our team, I asked him that same question. He did the Round Rock, Texas, search in 2021. That's a district of forty-eight thousand students. He did the Wichita, Kansas, search in 2023, district of forty-eight thousand students. And he said in both cases, he was surprised by the number and scope of stakeholder meetings that were necessary in a larger district. And he was reminded of how important it is to get feedback from those diverse groups of stakeholders. And in both cases, that feedback from stakeholders in both the survey and the stakeholder meetings was a very important part in developing the profile and helping the board determine what kind of superintendent that they were looking for. I've also been involved in some other complex searches. The Alaska Commissioner of Education search, very interesting complex search. ESD 123 in Pasco, they serve seventy thousand students and other complex searches that we completed in 2022. But they're all unique, they're all different and they all had their own challenges and it takes a lot of good communication between the team and the board. As you saw on that first slide that Labor started with, those yellow lines, those were the five times that we need to meet with the board. And that's a crucial part of the process is board involvement in the search. And those meetings can be in person, they can be virtual. We're flexible and we can do it either way. But that communication with the entire board at those milestone steps is very important in this process and important part of the way we work. So I think that's all I have. Rich, did we leave you out? Were you going to cover anything? I can't remember.
I think we're okay to honor the board's time if there are additional questions. Maybe we move to that.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Perfect. I just want to quickly make note that we have been joined also by Director Sargu. I appreciate the presentation from Ray and Associates team looking at four board directors, seeing if there are questions. I'm not seeing any questions. Going to give it one for technology purposes, giving it one more second here.
I don't have any questions. I'm listening.
Perfect. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you again to Ray and Associates team for being here on a Friday evening. I really appreciate it. Appreciate the presentation, you being so thoughtful and going through and addressing our questions. Our next interview, board directors doesn't start till five-thirty-five. So I'm going to do a quick, we will now be in recess for, let's see, that is, what time did I say? I'm sorry. Fifteen. We're going to be in recess for a twenty-minute break. We will reconvene at five-thirty. So we will be back here at five-thirty, board directors.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right.
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 All right, the special meeting of the board is now reconvened at 5:30 PM. Give folks a second here. So we are going to move on to our second interview of the evening. This will be with McPherson and Jacobson. For the public watching, the interview evaluation criteria is currently up on the screen. For Board Directors, you should have the scoring rubric in your inbox to fill out. Just a reminder to submit your scores to the Board Office by April 22nd for tabulation. At our April 23rd Board Special Meeting, we will review the interview scores, discuss and select a firm for board action during our regular board meeting on April 23rd. We do have our procurement specialists online. If folks have any questions this evening, please, or if Board Directors have any questions, please raise your hand. They are here to help, to support us this evening. Waiting just for one more second here, for one more Board Director to get back on and then we will continue on. All right, we are all here. Any Board Directors have questions? All right, seeing no questions, then we're gonna go on to the presentation from our next firm. We will hear now from McPherson and Jacobson. I will pass it over to them now. Let's try that again. Do we have anyone here? Do we have McPherson and Jacobson here yet?
So, I am here. I believe my colleagues, apologies for my laryngitis. I see from the text that they are on.
I'm so sorry. It said we were muted and I didn't have the ability, so now I see I can unmute. Gustavo, you should be there as well. You should have to go up and unmute and turn your camera on. I apologize for that. Dr. Hershul, thank you so much. I know your voice is very bad tonight, so thank you. I have a couple of questions. As far as process, we have approximately 40 minutes. How much time do the Board request for questions and answers, please?
So I believe we submitted all our questions beforehand. And as long as they are answered in the presentation, Board Directors have an opportunity for follow-up questions. But really, I leave that up to you to decide, to determine how much time you want to leave.
Okay, that's fine. The second question is, our presentation, is that up on the screen? And do we just ask for the next slide to move forward?
I'm looking to the Board Office here, they just got off mute.
You will be able to share your presentation. You should have sharing privileges now. But let us know if that is not working and we can pull up your presentation on our end as well.
Yeah, that's what we had prepared for. We thought it was gonna be on your screen. That might be the quickest way. Tell me when the presentation's up, please. Great, thank you. Obviously, McPherson, Jacobson, next slide, please. And next slide. So my name is Dr. Stephen Louder. We'll introduce ourselves, our team members, in just a couple of slides. But I wanted to say that some very important things. We believe that it's critical to the success of your students and your community that you have strong, high-quality leadership. And that's our mission, to provide you with the very best leadership possible. And to, our search process has successfully brought high-quality leadership to many urban school districts. To name a few, Albuquerque, Washoe County, Charlotte, Mecklenburg, Las Vegas, Fresno, I was recently on the Fresno search, Louisville, Sarasota, and I did the Kent presentation, or this search as well. We have deep urban experience. We're a national firm. Next slide, please. This is reiterating what I was saying earlier. We're established, a leading national search firm. We have a network of over 120 consultants like the people that are on the team tonight. We're a national recruiter, not just local, we're a national recruiter. The most important thing for us is transparency with our clients and their constituents, and the authenticity of engagement with the stakeholders, which include parents and students and staff, classified staff, certificated staff, elected officials, all those constituents that are part of the process and milieu of an important urban school district. And we have a strong record of successful placements. Next, please. Thank you. So, I'd like to just introduce myself and also another member of the team, Dr. Joel, who is actually on a flight back from Europe now. He wasn't able to be here with us. But my name is Steve Louder. My last place, I've been a superintendent for more than 30 years. My last placement was in Stockton Unified, highly diverse and high-poverty school district of nearly 40,000 students. For the last 10 years, I've been a search consultant for McPherson Jacobson and done multiple, multiple searches for them. As I said, including most recently Fresno. multiple, multiple searches for them, as I said, including most recently Fresno, California School District of over 70,000 students. Dr. Joel is the retired superintendent from Lincoln School District, Nebraska, 42,000 students, and he has had many of the urban school searches. He's kind of our urban specialist, Albuquerque, Charlotte, Las Vegas, Louisville, Sarasota are his current searches. Dr. Herschel, would you like to introduce yourself? I know your voice is so bad.
Certainly, with apologies. I just got a very bad case of laryngitis. So I'm Mary Alice Herschel. I am familiar with a number of the board members. I was previously superintendent in the Renton School District. You have my resume. I won't go through all of those things. I'm a lifetime educator. And since the superintendency has been done, quite a bit of work in education philanthropy with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. So I'm just chief of staff for Governor Inslee to launch his administration. And most recently, started my own consulting firm that I am working both with search firms, that I'm honored to be part of the McPherson team. And I do, excuse me, individual mentoring support for new superintendents and working with school boards. So I do a lot of that work in Washington State and a couple outside of the state. So I think I'll turn it to you.
Gustavo, thank you, Mary. Dr. Herschel, thank you.
So thank you. I'm Gustavo Badairas, superintendent in Oregon, in a mid-sized district about 40,000, and also the current AASA president, which is the National Association for School Superintendents, about 14,000 folks across the US, and immediate past president of ALAS, the Association for Latino Administrators and Superintendents. Been a superintendent for 14 years and an educator for 35 on the West Coast, on three western states, California, Washington State, and Oregon. Thank you.
Dr. Herschel, we plan to have you do the next slide. Next slide, please. Just tell us when you can or cannot continue. Next slide, please.
So part of our presentation today starts with your decision you've already made as a board with engaging a search firm, the structured transparent process from the beginning to the end, ensuring that we follow the detailed timelines of the search, and make sure it locks in with your schedule and your process, and then a deep commitment to engaging stakeholders locally in the development with the search criteria that you already have set up, and then engaging stakeholders to add to what is needed in the next superintendent for Seattle. There's template, applications, and forms and advertisements, but all customizable to make it unique to Seattle. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. So one of the many things that McPherson prides itself on is the recruiting, the vetting of candidates, really digging deep into the candidate pool and who's out there that could be a best fit. A lot of background work, verifying everything in resumes, conducting deeper-than-normal reference checks and background, communicating with all the candidates throughout the process so everyone's informed of where they are in the process. And then also just navigating all of the state and legal requirements for the open meetings, what has to be taken care of, and then confidentiality, of course, with different candidates and the particular situations that we be in. Investigating and evaluating appropriate salaries and benefits. That's an opportunity for the board to go deeper with information that McPherson can put together for you. And I do normally do the next two slides with why choose McPherson, and it validates my reason for joining McPherson and being part of this team to hopefully serve Seattle. But my colleague has agreed my voice to do my next two slides for me, so that way you don't have to listen to this.
Oh, thank you. And again, so we've conducted searches all across the United States, over 1,000 searches, and really, we pride ourselves on being flexible in terms of how we customize our searches based on the board's desires, the board's needs, timelines, et cetera. And we really pride ourselves in terms of the retention of candidates. This is something I really want to highlight. Where 80% of our candidates remain in same position over five years, 60% remain in the same position over 10, and 40% of the candidates hired remain over 15 years. That's a pride point for McPherson Jacobson, and it's something that we strive to have people that are the right fit for the right district so that there's longevity in the position and there's a strong board superintendent relationships to be able to allow to do that. Next slide, please. Again, McPherson Jacobson, we don't hire the superintendents. You do as a board. Again, we're consultants, we're the recruiters of talent. We have, we have a lot of people across the US, and we broadcast broadly to get the best talent pool we possibly can and that meet your criteria and bring that, those candidates to you in terms of the best fit, what we feel is going to be the best fit for Seattle public. Again, we represent what you want and work directly for you. Next slide, please. Turn it over to Steve.
So timeline, search process is established by the board. Unfortunately, you may or may not have seen our draft calendar that just got sent to the district this afternoon, but we have a draft proposed calendar that would come within with a superintendent selection in the last week of June 2025. So hopefully that's there. If not, you may look at it later. Usually it takes eight to 12 weeks. We can do it faster. It can be also much quicker if it's a completely confidential search, if that's the desire of the board. We go, Gus, did you want to go to the next slide about five phases?
Please, so thank you. So we're going to spend some time here on the five phases in terms of how we process. And we first, we're going to meet with the school board to identify your characteristics. What are you looking for in the next superintendent in Seattle? And then which groups of folks do you want us to connect with? Which stakeholder groups? Which affinity spaces do you want us to connect with? Students, parents, specific languages, examples? And then we establish a timeline, as Steve just mentioned, and the critical dates that you want to hit to make sure we meet those benchmarks. And we advertise, we ask you, where do you want us to advertise? We'll give you some examples of where we typically advertise, and maybe again you want some more specific, and we can work with you on those. And of course, the salary range, because that's something that's asked often by candidates that we contact in terms of what is the salary range? And then craft the job posting and vacancy announcement based on the desired characteristics that we have for folks in terms of what the board's looking for, what the community's looking for. That's phase one. Phase two, we will then meet with those stakeholders that you have identified and also distribute our surveys that are co-created with the school board in terms of what you want to look for, and develop promotional materials, again, to advertise the vacancy and spread those again across the United States. And then we start to, again, get our application materials and actively recruit. This is where we really utilize our network of superintendents from across the country to really get the word out there and make sure that people, again, understand the positions open and everything that the board is looking for, the characteristics, and trying to identify the best fit and the broadest range of candidates that we can. Phase three, you know, we would then read and evaluate the application files and really trim down to a certain select group of candidates that don't meet the criteria to those who do meet their criteria. And that's where we also start reference checking. And with reference checking, we go more than just what's on the candidate's applications. We go three-deep, so we go deeper. We make sure that we hit as many people as we can, even those, again, that are not on the reference sheet. We make sure that we hit references that are past employers, other people that are on our, and again, we have a wide network, so we go pretty deep in terms of where we want to make sure we have contact, to ensure that we have the right references, so there's no surprises. Phase four, again, we go back to meet with the board, and we review the shortlist of candidates with you to see, this is the group that we have, and work with the board to make sure that the candidate pool is acceptable. And then we work with you on choosing which candidates to interview and prepare the board, prepare, work with you in terms of the process, and coordinate interviews with you and your staff, with your staff, typically the board secretary or others, HR department. And we all, during that time, we keep the candidates informed of the status of their application. Then phase five, again, once the board does select a candidate, we work with you to establish performance objectives and measures, and this is also something that we want to highlight. We provide a two-year McPherson Jacobson guarantee, saying that we would guarantee that the superintendent stays in Seattle for a few years, and if not, and Steve can speak to this, and if not, we'll come back and conduct the search again, because we would have expenses, but the core search would be done again. Steve, can you weigh in a little bit on that?
Yeah, I think you've done a very good job of describing it. If the person that you select leaves for any purpose or reason, within the first two years, we come back and do the search for just any expenses that we have. The only exception to that, if there's a major political change in the board and that's the reason for the moving on to the board, we'll, I think, discuss that with the board before we automatically go into a full guaranteed mode. But normally, that doesn't happen, and if the person leaves because of family issues or some other things, then we'll come back and honor that guarantee. Gus, I'd like Dr. Herschel to talk about the phase five and beyond. I know your throat is bad, but if you could say just a few things about that program?
Sure, happy to. So phase five and beyond is an optional support for ensuring the success in the first year or two of the superintendent's experience. Again, working with the superintendent and with the board, the five-year plan, the strategic plan, all of the things that need to happen. And in a large district like Seattle, what's the current plan? Where are you in your strategic plan years? And then just being a mentor, a help to a new superintendent, and even an experienced superintendent but new to Seattle. And so the experiences with providing that kind of phase five support has really helped with ensuring the longevity of a superintendent, especially in those first couple of years. So it's a high-support option and direct involvement with both the board and the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Herschel. We also provide as an option a psychological profile of your selected superintendent candidate that will give you insights into their thinking patterns, how they work with other people. Boards around the country have found it to be very insightful to help them understand each other and how people and the new superintendent works. So that's also another option. Let's see, I think we're going to, I'm going to have to say next slide a couple of times because this slide was animated, so try next slide, please. Oh, no, it's fine. It wasn't, that's fine. So the investment, the search for your district is not to exceed 45,500. That's all-inclusive of the things that are listed. That's phases one through five, not the optional beyond phase five. 30 days on the American Association of School Administrators, 30 days on top jobs, 30 days in NASB, six weeks in ALAS, one posting in Washington State, sorry, the School Directors' Association website, one posting on the Washington Association of School Administrators, up to three consecutive days of in-person stakeholder meetings. And I think an important thing to say here is that our team will meet with each board member individually to discuss their hopes and desires about the search. That helps us also in the vetting process, so we have a deeper understanding of the needs and criteria of all the board members collectively and individually. Online stakeholder surveys, we use K-12 Insight. Some districts prefer to use their own mechanism, but that's the one we use. What we'll do is we'll post the same questions that we use, or we can modify it at the board's desire to ask specific questions that they have deep interest in. But all of those questions, all those responses, albeit any individual's name or any profanity, will be a bulk download data dump to the board, so it'll be useful to their decision-making process. We will, at the end of an extensive community stakeholder meeting process, be it Zoom, telephone calls, personal calls to certain individuals, personal meetings, in-person meetings, all of that information will be developed into an executive profile summary report, and that information will be given to the board, again, for their deliberation process. We also provide an opportunity for all of those finalists candidates to create a video that the board will be able to see before they select those that they wish to interview. We have standard questions, but if the board and some boards choose to modify and ask specific questions, we're able to do that as well. We're able to put these questions that we ask the community up in multiple languages and get their translations and get them back to you as well. We will do a criminal, financial, and degree verification background check for those chosen by the board for interviews, travel expenses for consultants, and scheduled trips, that's included, and office expenses are all included in the 45,500. Let's see, I think that's it on the investment side of the coin. Next slide, please. I think some key takeaways are transparency. We believe in transparency. We will do the search that the board wishes. They wish a confidential search, we will do that, but we believe in as much transparency with the community and your stakeholder group, your staff, your teachers, your students as possible. We have high sustainability of leadership. Once you've selected a person that we find the best fit, they come and stay. In fact, if the board can't see supporting their finalists for five years, I'm not sure that we're the right company for you, because you can no longer have sustainable change and sustained positive, strong leadership if you don't give that individual, whoever it is, five years' strong support from the board. We also believe in high, very high involvement stakeholder, your stakeholders. Next slide, we've got a question, but I have a couple of things I need to say. Again, we're extremely experienced in urban school searches, I'll say again. Albuquerque, 83,000, Washoe County, 64,000, Charlotte Mecklenburg, 147,000, Las Vegas, very large, 300,000, Fresno, 70,000, Louisville, almost 100,000, Sarasota, 45,000 students. I wanted to speak to one of the questions, and I know I probably haven't answered them all, but I think we have time to answer the questions the board may have. Over the past five years, this is about diversity of applicants. Over the past five years, approximately one-third of our applications, our applicants have been female, and a quarter of our applicants have been ethnically diverse. And over the past 10 years, one-third of the organizations we've represented have placed women or ethnically diverse candidates. While it's not our job to select candidates, we do provide highly diverse field of candidates for the board's review. Let's see, I'm not sure that you've had a chance to look at the timelines, but hopefully you'll get a chance to do that. Anything else from Dr. Herschel or Dr. Aldares? No?
No, so just with our, with our range of network, again, we're very closely associated with the Association for Latino Administrators and Superintendent, as well as NAPSI, our African-American group, and they're, they're members, and we try just to make sure that we have an incredibly diverse group of candidates that's brought forward toward you, as well as a lot of West Coast connections with specific state affinity groups. It's WALAS in Washington State, AWALA here, the Oregon Association for Latino Administrators, or CALSA, the California Association. But we do go nationwide to make sure we have the most diverse qualified pool we possibly can to present to our school board.
So there's also a couple of things I've taken notes here, and the board, I'm sure will have some other questions, follow-up questions for us, but, you know, how do we ensure that we provide you with the skill set, the applicants with the skill set you need? Clearly, you need somebody who's going to be able to handle controversy. You've got budget problems, significant, serious budget issues. So we're going to provide you with individuals who have successful experience going through these budgeting, school closing issues, if you will, reduce going through these budgeting, school closing issues, if you will, reducing their budgets, people who know how to handle these very controversial and very hot topics. They're out there, we have access to them, and we will provide them for you. So we will use those kinds of criteria and the criteria that you have developed to screen and sort the applicants that apply for your position. Let's see, what else do we have here? Just key things. We talked about being able to modify our search tools and our tools to get information back from your constituents, your stakeholders. Again, let me just reiterate, we're a national organization with deep urban experience. And I guess at that, I would turn it over to the board for follow-up questions that we haven't covered.
Thank you. Directors, any follow-up questions?
None for me. None for me.
Director Clark?
Yeah, sorry, none for me.
All right. Director Sarge, Sarge, you're checking in. She's on mute. All right, well, I appreciate you all making time on a Friday evening. We appreciate hearing from you. Thank you so much, and we appreciate the presentation and trying to answer some of our questions we sent beforehand.
Thank you.
No, no questions. My mic was disabled, but somebody just enabled me.
Great. Thank you, Director Sarge.
I would just like to say in closing that we appreciate the opportunity, and we would love to to serve your community and your school district, and we will provide whatever services are necessary to ensure that you receive the most important, highest qualified candidate for your next superintendent.
Thank you, thank you so much. Board directors, we do not have our next presentation till six-thirty. So we will take a recess now until six-twenty-seven roughly. So we will reconvene at six-twenty-seven for our next presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is 6:26. The special board meeting is now reconvened at 6:27 PM. Our final interview for the evening will be with HYA. It's going to start here at 6:30. So we've got three minutes, but just a few quick reminders again. The firm will have 40 minutes to present, followed by director questions, or if there are any follow-up director questions, we submitted our questions to them upfront to use in their interview this evening. The score sheet, which board staff will put up here on the screen again, is in your inbox. Please review and fill out and send to the board office by April 22 for tabulation. At our April 23 special meeting, we will review the interview scores, discuss selective firm. And then at our regular board meeting on that same day, we will take board action on the firm selection. It looks like, or I will say, we also have procurement staff available if any board directors have questions for them through this process. Otherwise, it looks like we do have HYA here present now, and so we will pass it over to them for their interview and presentation now. This will be the last presentation this evening. So handing it over to HYA. Board staff, do we have HYA on the line?
Yes, we have one member of the HYA team here. Nancy, are you able to hear us? You should be able to unmute.
Is she aware that her microphone, we can't hear her? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you, not her.
Nancy, are you able to hear us in the meeting?
Julia, do you have a number to reach out to her or send her a message maybe in the chat?
Yes, we will try to get a hold of her.
Just to give a quick update, folks, we are working to try to get HYA online here. Board staff is working on that now. It would just hopefully be a few minutes.
Nancy or Micah, are you able to hear us?
We're unable to hear you.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, I was just waiting for it to start. Because I saw nobody else's pictures up, so I thought we were waiting to start. But yeah, I'll unmute now.
Okay, I'm here.
And will you be sharing your own slides, or would you like us to share them?
Either way, you can share them. That's fine. We have a slide deck in front of us, but if you have it, that'd be fine for you to share it.
Welcome, HYA. We will get your screens or your slides on the screen here, and you have the floor.
You guys all still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I cannot hear you guys. Are you speaking?
Can you hear us now? Test, test. Can other board directors hear? Can any other board directors or anyone else hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I can hear everybody.
Yep, great, awesome. Makai, are you ready to go?
I am ready to go. So are you? All right. Good evening, good folks. There in beautiful Seattle, my name is Makai Ali, and I'd like to introduce my co-pilot here.
Hi, my name is Nancy Perez, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight on behalf of HYA and as one of the team members that would be working with your school system. Thank you so much.
Okay, and who do we have from the Seattle team?
This evening, we have our board directors. We have Director Mizrahi, Director Clark, Director Hershey, Director Sargu, and myself, Director Top.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very kindly. So we're not in labor. We'll most certainly jump right into it. I'd like to talk about the board's leadership responsibility. The next slide underscores the significance to understand diverse communities and the importance of finding the next leader in your district. That's the board's most significant role, as we all are keenly aware. It's not just about undertaking a headhunting expedition, but the work of the board throughout this process is to understand what the stakeholders want in the next leader and match the wishes of the community, which is why we're going to focus heavy on community engagement and ensure that we capture all of the diverse voices within your exceptional school community. Selecting a leader who meets the leadership profile, but also understands what it takes in order to drive a very diverse school district. Next slide. So slide number three underscores HYA as a trusted partner. Superintendent searches garner a tremendous amount of interest from the community as well as the media, and it takes a search firm with a tremendous amount of extensive expertise in large urban, very complex politically-charged environments. And so when a district undergoes a superintendent search process, the board will be in the spotlight on the local and sometimes even the national level. And whether you like it or not, even with the most pristine processes, there are going to be individuals who like and individuals who do not like. The decisions will be a tremendous amount of public scrutiny. And so tonight, what I want you guys to walk away knowing, we understand the challenges because we've been in many of your very high-profile searches throughout the country. And so picking the right partner to stand with you and to defend the process, again, to defend the process, is extremely important in moving through this very delicate and nuanced activity. Slide four. So when you're looking at the trusted relationship between the board and HYA, it's extremely important and significant to underscore our relationship with each and every board member. It's very important to understand your visions or aspirations for your community. It helps us to work very collaboratively and to work very well with the board by having a relationship with each and every board member. We don't want any surprises. We don't want you to have any surprises, and we want to make certain that we bring our proven techniques to help move the process along, but also understand that you know the community very well. Again, the emphasis on working with consensus as well as building a very collective force multiplier to help the board move forward with respect to obtaining and exceeding the objective, which is to hire a superintendent. I go back to the need to work with the board intricately around community engagement, as well as ensuring that the diverse folk within your community are very well represented. And so let's look at slide five. This is our team. Our team consists of myself, serving as executive lead, the chief operating officer, Dr. Perez, and then, of course, we have support staff, Ms. Vincent, Ms. Martel, Ms. Mellon, project manager, associate support, client support. And so the five of us will work very collaboratively and collegially to ensure that we meet each and every need of your community. It's very important to understand. We've put together an all-star cast of folk who represent the diversity of our country. These individuals live east.
Board staff, do we have HYA on the line?
Yes, we have one member of the HYA team here. Nancy, are you able to hear us? You should be able to unmute.
Is she aware that her microphone, we can't hear her? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you, not her.
Yeah.
Nancy, are you able to hear us in the meeting?
Julia, do you have a number to reach out to her or send her a message maybe in the chat?
Yes, we will try to get ahold of her.
Just to give a quick update, folks, we are working to try to get HYA online here. Board staff is working on that now. It would just hopefully be a few minutes.
Nancy or Micah, are you able to hear us?
We're unable to hear you.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, I was just waiting for it to start. I was because I saw nobody else's pictures up, so I thought we were waiting to start. But yeah, I'll unmute now.
Okay, I'm here.
And will you be sharing your own slides or would you like us to share them?
Either way, you can share them. That's fine. We have a slide deck in front of us, but if you have it, that'd be fine for you to share it.
Welcome, HYA. We will get your screens or your slides on the screen here and you have the floor.
You guys all still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I cannot hear you guys. Are you speaking?
Can you hear us now? Test, test. Can other board directors hear? Can any other board directors or anyone else hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, I can.
I can hear you.
I can hear everybody.
Yep, I can hear you. Yep. Yep, great. Awesome. Makai, are you ready to go?
I am ready to go. So are you? All right. Good evening, good folks. There in beautiful Seattle, my name is Makai Ali and I'd like to introduce my co-pilot here.
Hi, my name is Nancy Perez and I'm thrilled to be here tonight on behalf of HYA and as one of the team members that would be working with your school system. Thank you so much.
Okay, and who do we have from the Seattle team?
This evening, we have our board directors. We have Director Mizrahi, Director Clark, Director Hershey, Director Sargu, and myself, Director Top.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very kindly. So we're not in labor. We'll most certainly jump right into it. I'd like to talk about the board's leadership responsibility. The next slide underscores the significance to understand diverse communities and the importance of finding the next leader in your district. That's the board's most significant role, as we all are keenly aware. It's not just about undertaking a headhunting expedition, but the work of the board throughout this process is to understand what the stakeholders want in the next leader and match the wishes of the community, which is why we're going to focus heavy on community engagement and ensure that we capture all of the diverse voices within your exceptional school community. Selecting a leader who meets the leadership profile, but also understands what it takes in order to drive a very diverse school district. Next slide. So slide number three underscores HYA as a trusted partner. Superintendent searches garner a tremendous amount of interest from the community as well as the media, and it takes a search firm with a tremendous amount of extensive expertise in large urban, very complex politically charged environments. And so when a district undergoes a superintendent search process, the board will be in the spotlight on the local and sometimes even the national level. And whether you like it or not, even with the most pristine processes, there are going to be individuals who like and individuals who do not like. The decisions will be a tremendous amount of public scrutiny. And so tonight, what I want you guys to walk away knowing, we understand the challenges because we've been in many of your very high-profile searches throughout the country. And so picking the right partner to stand with you and to defend the process, again, to defend the process, is extremely important in moving through this very delicate and nuanced activity. Slide four. So when you're looking at the trusted relationship between the board and HYA, it's extremely important and significant to underscore our relationship with each and every board member. It's very important to understand your visions or aspirations for your community. It helps us to work very collaboratively and to work very well with the board by having a relationship with each and every board member. We don't want any surprises. We don't want you to have any surprises. And we want to make certain that we bring our proven techniques to help move the process along, but also understand that you know the community very well. Again, the emphasis on working with consensus as well as building a very collective force multiplier to help the board move forward with respect to obtaining and exceeding the objective, which is to hire a superintendent. I go back to the need to work with the board intricately around community engagement, as well as ensuring that the diverse folk within your community are very well represented. And so let's look at slide five. This is our team. Our team is consists of myself, serving as executive lead, the chief operating officer, Dr. Perez, and then of course, we have support staff, Ms. Vincent, Ms. Martell, Ms. Mellon, project manager, associate support, client support. And so the five of us will work very collaboratively and collegially to ensure that we meet each and every need of your community. It's very important to understand. We've put together an all-star cast of folk who represent the diversity of our country. These individuals live east, west, as well as in the Midwest. And so they have a tremendous amount of expertise managing very complex searches, utilizing research, as well as partnering with the board to understand and utilize all of the search processes that we can bring or that we shall bring to bear. Again, this team has been responsible for helping boards play superintendents throughout the country. Our job is simply to vet and collect, to make sure that we provide comprehensive background checks, to make certain that we ensure that the community profile is representative of that which your community feels is the most important element of the search process, which is ensuring that pedagogical needs are met, operational needs are met, and someone who is fiscally austere. Slide six. So this is a little bit about the firm. Thirty-five years conducting executive searches, over 2,000 searches done, 80-plus searches per year, 130-plus nationwide associates. That's our network, ensuring that we can touch each and every corner of this country. If you look at our client satisfaction rating, 9.4 out of 10, not too bad. We pride ourselves on research and analytics. We have a full-time back office as well as IT support staff, which is referenced to slide number five. Those individuals will be there to help you 24 hours a day. If there's an email, rest assured, our response time will be within five to eight hours. You will hear right back from us. We partner with national as well as state universities, meaning local universities, some of your leading national state universities, but that partnership helps us to work with superintendents, to develop superintendents as well as school boards. We have a phenomenal partnership with Howard University and the National School Board Association around a cohort, helping school boards understand best practices in order to govern their local LEA. The next slide. So slide number seven simply underscores HYA's experience. And this is just a sampling of clients over the past five years. We did a phenomenal job managing the superintendent search in Atlanta, Phoenix. We're currently working in Jefferson County, which is Louisville. We're doing the search in Montgomery, Clark County, a very large, the fourth-largest school system in the country, a very complex search Clark County was. Los Angeles Unified, Loudoun County, and the list goes on and on. And so again, we have a tremendous depth and breadth of experience working in school districts that are similar in size as well as complexity as Seattle and bringing to bear candidates who are representative of not just that community, but also this country. Let's drop down to slide number eight. Slide number eight simply highlights the why. And when you're looking at an Apollo root calls analysis, it always talks about the five whys. And so when you look at HYA, the question would be, why? Well, it's important for students and staff within your system to understand and to know that we've been around long enough. We see continually how others use our work and document it as their own work. We see our work out there from other firms. Can you believe it? And so people shamelessly borrow or lift because they understand that we perfected working with boards, working with stakeholders, working with communities, candidates, students, working in districts. We've been trusted for over 35 years, validated client testimonials, and we're aggressive with respect to our recruitment efforts. Sure, there's a little passive recruitment where individuals might apply off the street based upon reviewing our websites. But again, our objective is to touch each and every single community within this country where there's a superintendent who matched your leadership profile report. I continue to go back to that, which we'll talk about in subsequent slides. But the significance and the importance of ensuring that we utilize this leadership profile report as the fulcrum of the search, and that fulcrum will help us to bring to bear an exceptional leader. Slide number nine simply talks about the recruitment first and foremost, recruiting locally, the Northwest, the West Coast, throughout the country, seeking great candidates to ensure that we bring forth a phenomenal slate, again, that is diverse, but also a slate that has demonstrated an ability, not just pedagogically, but also a slate that has demonstrated their ability in order to drive systemic change within school systems, raising student achievement, addressing operational issues, school bus, construction, facilities, et cetera. Slide number 10, the HYA signature search process. We do understand that your superintendent's last day is September 1st, and so we would curate an experience that would involve community engagement for a minimum of two months on the ground, engaging your community for two months in addition to surveys as well as online engagement. We don't want anyone to feel that we've not availed ourselves to them irrespective of work schedule and/or language barrier. We want to make sure we hear from your community. That will be done in May as well as June. Then the recruitment phase, that's looking far and wide for talented candidates. Those candidates must meet the leadership profile, and it will be derived from the engagement activities. That'll be ongoing. Then we'll move to the selection phase in August. Transition in August will facilitate the process after we've arrived to the best match, and then of course, support the board as well as superintendent in August to ensure there's a mid-August start where there's a little overlap between the arrival of a new superintendent and the departure of the outgoing superintendent to ensure that there's just a good handoff and there's continuity therein. And so when looking at the engage phase, let's talk about the difference. Slide number 12. Successful and deep intrinsic community engagement, developing a strat plan for the board. We're interviewing the board.
Next slide, please.
Slide number 12.
Thank you.
Successful and deep community engagement, as I articulated, intrinsic. We're looking at the board's strat plan. We're providing board interviews. We're doing individual interviews, focus groups, community forums, stakeholder survey. You as board members and the district will provide us with a list of the various communities and individuals you'd want us to engage. So for example, immigrant rights groups, student groups, individuals who may be a part of your black parent unions, Latino, Asian, et cetera. We want to engage everyone, be no stone unturned. If you look at that little arrow that says HYA, that arrow then points to all of that work and the collection of that data, qualitative and quantitative, then leads and informs the development of the leadership profile report, summary surveys, selection criteria, characteristics, which will help to determine the best match for your next superintendent. So again, we would need all of the data points in order to develop the profile report to be able to share that profile report with aspirants as well as your community as a whole, and then we'll be in a phenomenal position to move forward and ensure that there's a match. Again, we're not hiring your superintendent. We're facilitating a process so that what your community states is in the profile report. That profile report is in shared among the nation. If individuals do not meet elements of the leadership profile report, then it'll be hard for them to manage this system if their vision is not congruent with that of your community. Slide 13. So as stated, we're your partner, we're your ambassadors. We're there to listen and validate constituent voices. So how to facilitate focus groups. And I've spent a tremendous amount of time talking about community engagement, focus groups, and the diversity that we bring to bear. Versatile meetings, face-to-face, Zoom, we'll meet in various locations. It does not matter. Churches, synagogues, it matters not. Email feedback. We're meeting flexible times, morning, afternoon, evening, weekends, weekdays. Again, it does not matter. Our objective is to be where the community is. We're not making the community drive downtown and fight traffic. We're going to come out into the streets and engage focus groups like your high school students, your parents, your various union organizations, whether they be certificated or classified, administrators, your business community, the ecumenical community, the civic community, the mayor, the city council, the county leadership, et cetera, the folks over at Silent Transit. We want to hear from every single individual. We want to make sure that we seek and reach all community members, and we want to coordinate working with your staff to ensure that we meet the linguistic needs of your very diverse and voluminous community. And so looking at the research base, I'm going to turn this over to my good friend, Dr. Perez, and she's going to really talk about what we've been able to manage by way of research-based stakeholder surveys and statistical analysis in case they're in.
So thank you very much. So the biggest, broadest net that you immediately get feedback on is the survey, and we work with the board to make sure that that is really disseminated through all of the channels that you already have, of course, through social media, through listservs, et cetera. And the survey is developed with a corresponding white paper that shows you how leaders perform in different areas. And the great thing about the survey is not only do you get responses back that aggregate information, but also show you like the upper left-hand corner based on different constituent group and where they're clustering together or not. We also have information on different programming to kind of validate where some of the focus group information is coming back and where those are able to be synthesized into what is the leadership profile. I know one of the questions that you posed and that many of our clients pose is about survey research, right? And like, how many responses do we need to get? What's typical? And I will tell you that there really isn't a specific answer that one can provide in terms of, you know, what different communities will, how they will respond to the survey. I'll tell you, in Clark County, for example, we had over 15,000 responses, and they were happening simultaneously on the same day where we were able to handle that and it never crashed. Our servers were up and running. Our IT staff was working all weekend to make sure that that didn't happen. But really, the question of margin of error depends on numerous factors, and our experience about surveys shows that we can achieve a margin of error of plus or minus 4% with roughly about 500 responses. And when you think about all the surveys that we hear about nationally, right? Oh, there's about 2,000 respondents, and those are making inferences on 300 million Americans. And so we help you understand the complexity of survey. We have survey researchers in our firm, and we really understand that if we can get to that 500 response level and particularly knowing that it isn't necessarily just about the response rate, but about the total number of responses and the representative nature of those responses, we feel really, really good about making inferences. And I'll tell you one last thing about community engagement that I have learned over all of my experiences working with really every one of those school districts that was on that first slide. When you provide the community with a voice, both within the survey and through focus groups and opportunities, and then they see their voice reflected in this official document called the leadership profile, the board has provided and has taken advantage of what an awesome opportunity is to hear from their diverse constituent base. And I have found in my experience that when that happens and when people see their voice reflected in that report, they are engaged and they feel that they can trust the process and trust the board. And so that is really at the focus of that engage phase. Back to you, Makai, on the next slide. I can go on with this one, too. You want to take this one?
No, no.
Just as another example of some of the ways that we get feedback, whether it be from community forums during the select phase, whether it be from feedback as a result of participating in a focus group, whether it is about giving feedback and how the different candidates align to the leadership profile, we've provided QR codes. If you're going to have it livestreamed on cable, the QR code is in the corner. We can provide little cards when they walk in, all to get this kind of real-time feedback and make sure that people understand that we absolutely want to capture their voice. Next slide.
So before we jump to the recruit advantage, I just want to, I want to go back and I want to underscore whether folks are in Beacon Hill, university district, downtown Seattle, whether they're in Queen Anne, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter what part of Seattle they're in. We want to make certain that they understand and they know we're going to be there, and we're going to count on you as board members to ensure that you provide us with all of the community-based organizations so that we can tie into those focal, those focal points or those points of contact, as it were, to be able to move very quickly to establish meetings on the ground. So I just want to make sure that that's clear and we're all on one accord. Next slide. So slide 16, the recruitment phase. And so the advantage within the recruitment phase, let's just talk about our national recruiting infrastructure apparatus, as it were. We've excelled at navigating the needs of confidentiality as well as attracting top candidates. Again, these searches are very complex. They're very dynamic. They're very politically charged. You're working through board dynamics. You're working through the potential of elections, whether they be local or national. And so it's very important that the search firm has a level of expertise as well as understand the nature of diplomacy. Next slide, which is slide 18. So when you look at slide 18, back to the Y factor associated with HYA. Ninety-five percent of, excuse me, 94% of our superintendents stay the full term of their first contract. Seventy-five percent of superintendents recruited by HYA associates. Again, that's active recruitment, not just passive. Our relationships exist far beyond a search, given our active work with respect to the development of strategic planning, executive coaching, and general engagement around literacy, numeracy, and the community impact work done throughout school districts. Our reach is vast as well as wide. And so if you look at the recruiting advantage, you'll see that we promenade a 30,000-plus email subscriber database, goes out each and every month, 30,000-plus, 46,000 unique users on our website. So we're showcasing every superintendent's search irrespective of the fact we're doing it or not, because our objective is to help school systems. And so we want to make sure that we showcase all opportunities. That then helps to drive traffic to our websites. And so again, we work with superintendents as a part of our coaching and collaborative efforts. Our associates lead superintendent academies. Those academies partner with universities like the University of Southern California as well as Howard University. And so again, superintendents know us, executive cabinet officials know us. And if you look to that slide, excuse me, the little small graph, as it were, that's embedded in the slide, it underscores a number of superintendent searches. And look at the year. HYA far and wide has outpaced the competitors, each and every single competitor, in urban superintendent search work because of that which I've just articulated, which is our recruiting advantage and the fact which is our recruiting advantage and the fact that we're in every single state providing a measure of work, whether it be superintendent search work, working around equity, strategic planning, executive coaching, or other aspects within an L E A.
And in fact, one of the questions that was proposed to us was about how do you seek a diverse pool of candidates? What methods do you use to recruit candidates that have historically been not represented in positions like the superintendent? It's the network. We know all the sitting superintendents. We know the cabinet level of superintendents. They trust us, they pick up our phone calls. We're able to explain what the challenges are in the district and how their skill set may be a match to those challenges, providing an awesome opportunity to get on the ground in a district and move a system for the sake of students. And so when that question was asked, it is about that fourth bullet point as much as it is any of the other ones. You have to actually know the people and that's how you bring diverse recruitment to the table.
So let's look at, at slide nineteen. And I want to highlight exactly what Dr. Perez was articulating. So if you look at this slide, it talks about a candidate recruitment tool. It is a candidate profile system that we use. Leaders from across the country log on and they develop a profile. During a given year, they upload different types of queries. They, they can look for searches, they can match their experience with the size of a district, a particular state. We have access to applicants from every search. We conduct behavioral assessments and all of this information is within a candidate's profile. Perhaps you might not be interested in seeking a superintendency, but you'll build that profile as a candidate and then you'll work on that profile as years progress. So again, we're providing candidates with an opportunity to develop profiles within a database. But we also are able to access any applicant throughout the country.
And what's great about that too is that we can query. So let's say you decide in your leadership profile that you want an experienced superintendent that has a doctorate, that's been in a system of at least thirty thousand students. We can put all those variables in. All of those individuals that match that leadership profile will be brought to us and we literally start by emailing every single one of them. Do you know about Seattle? The leadership profile has been posted. We would like to talk to you. And so that's just another way that we're able to really make sure that the net is out and that everybody knows about this position.
So look at slide twenty. So I've talked about the leadership profile being the fulcrum of the search. I'll give an example and it's articulated here. So secret that Seattle has had challenges with respect to your budget. And kudos to you as board members for passing that historic levy several weeks past. Hats off to you for that. Leadership profile will underscore that perhaps if it emerges, you may want somebody whose fiscal acumen might emerge as a desired characteristic. And then we'll recruit to match that individual with the profile. Any candidates that are suggested to H Y A from any stakeholder, they'll be evaluated through the leadership profile again that serves as the fulcrums. And we always can point back to, well, I didn't get an interview because you do not match the leadership profile. This is what the community said that they wanted and this is exactly what we use as the recruitment tool. As a firm, we're confident that we'll recruit candidates that match exactly what your community articulated, will bring forth an excellent pool for you to interview and to select from and make certain that we're able to capture all voices in that process. And I will tell you this, if in fact, there's an issue or a challenge with the timeline, we can deal with a strategy therein. But if we follow the prescriptive plan that we're laying out tonight, if this is the plan that we're going to follow, we will have your superintendent in seat mid-August. Let's look at recruitment consideration, slide twenty-one for Washington. This process will be fully confidential. It's very important for us to balance the confidentiality as well as the public's right to know. We must also align accordingly with respect to the law. Candidates will remain confidential. Only those candidates that the board has selected to be interviewed should be made public for the best applicant pool. Recruitment will be active. What does that mean? We're not just going to float a job and sit back and watch people passively apply. This is a very active recruitment effort, which means we will be on the phone utilizing that national network to recruit for your superintendent. Again, passive recruitment will indeed occur as always. But our objective here is to curate an experience for you as the board as well as the community and for the aspirant. We want to make sure that we are passive, we're recruiting via website and social media, but we're actively and aggressively recruiting in order to align with our schedule. And most certainly, we certainly shall. Drop down to slide twenty-two, focusing on transition. So what does this look like? This is the superintendent developing the one hundred day transition plan, which focuses on development of the board as well as the superintendent. Now, we do understand that you guys are doing some work with accounts of the great city schools. And so of course, we will make certain that we are very conscious and we're very sensitive to ensure that we envelop elements of your soft G student outcome focused governance training as well as that which you've already employed within this overall transition plan, making certain that that is part and parcel to a superintendent's executive coaching journey, documenting what was learned through the process, mapping out activities for the transition phase, communicating accountably with the community as well as the board, looking at the priorities of the board as well as the community stakeholders. Much of that will be captured in the leadership profile reports. An individual will be able to walk in, utilize the leadership profile report to connect and communicate with respect to the school community as well as utilizing the H Y A dashboard for which we will present to you during a subsequent moment in time. The dashboard will provide transparent and ongoing monitoring to ensure that the board can see exactly what's going on again, real time.
And it's, this is a PDF that we provided you. We do have examples to the hundred day plan. That one links in the live version to the Atlanta superintendent's hundred day plan that we worked on with that. That can just be found via the Atlanta Public Schools webpage, Hundred Day Plan. Or you can Google any of those from H Y A and see the kind of work that we do in the transition phase.
Perfect. I just want to say, we have about three more minutes for the presentation and then we have to move. We'll see if any directors have any follow-up questions.
Okay, so Dr.
Perfect, we're right on schedule.
Go ahead and close it on out with the analytics, if you will.
Okay, great. So we're just closing this out here. We just put some additional slides in here about some of the other technology and analytics that we do provide. Next slide, slide twenty-five, please. Thank you. As part of, of the PDF, I'm sorry, when we print it to PDF, it doesn't look exactly like mine does. This is an example of the kind of advertising analytics that we provide. We're able to show the board how many people from what states have clicked on the official posting? Have they read the leadership profile? How much time have they spent on the website? Where do they come from? And that really helps us and the board to understand the amount of interest in the position officially. Is more outreach needed? Is the salary and benefits competitive? Gives us a lot of great information. Next slide. Should the board wish an online delivery system? We utilize a board portal. It's like a confidential website that is password protected where we are able to put all the information from a search on the board portal. That way, all the board members have access to the right version. It's not floating around through emails to all the information, to the candidate's bios and backgrounds, to meeting dates. Everything can be delivered through the online H Y A portal system. If the board doesn't want that, we're happy to also do it a more traditional route. But many of our clients love the website and love that it's password protected and that they know everything that they need to know is in one place, accessible to them twenty-four seven. Next page. We've gone through the timeline, but again, working on May and June in the engage phase, working, we all know as educators, we know as search firm, that July is a bad month. It's bad for families, it's bad for the board, it's bad for administrators. And so trying to stay away from that July month, working it to August into that select phase and then mid-August to where the superintendent begins, allowing for that overlap with the current superintendent. Final slide is the pricing structure that was also in your proposal, which is thirty percent of the superintendent's compensation and then the reimbursables for any other services that are selected such as third-party advertising, third-party investigative background checks, et cetera. And so I think we're right on target. The last slide is just the question slide. Wanted to be mindful of the time that we were allotted and we really look forward now to answering any other specific questions.
Thank you so much, the H Y A team, for being here on a Friday evening. Board directors, do you have any questions?
None for me.
No questions from me.
None from me, from Sardu, that is.
Perfect. We might hear from Brandon, Brandon going once, twice, three times. All right, thank you so much, H Y A, for being here. No questions from us, I appreciate it. I appreciate you giving up a little bit of your time on Friday night.
Thank you. You guys have a phenomenal evening.
Thanks so much. Thank you for the time.
I also want to thank staff for being here Friday evening as well as board directors. Thank you. I know this was a long, oh, and we get a treat at the end. Hi, little one. Hi. A long three-hour meeting, but as there's no further business on the agenda, the meeting standard stands adjourned at seven eleven P M. Thank you, everyone. Good night.